The hour of six o'clock having arrived, I would call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, November 7, 2023. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, your honor. We have 11 members present in the chambers and 11 members in civic clerk and voting.
All right. Thank you, clerk. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Alder Galvin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Galvin.
Thank you, your honor. Everyone can be seated. As I was preparing to make some comments tonight, I was going to be more focused on the fact that we won't be getting together again until after Thanksgiving, and I was going to focus on being thankful. And then I was informed this afternoon that our fellow Alder, Jesse Burnett's mother, passed away this morning. And when I started thinking about that, I thought about everyone has someone special missing in their lives, and I just thought that maybe we could just spend a moment trying to remember those people, what made them so special to us, and just be thankful for the ones that we still have with us.
Thank you, Alder. Now, we will move along to approval of the minutes. Alder Ek, point of order?
Point of order, okay, never mind. Sorry. Apologize.
All right. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Weary, and that's to approve the minutes from October 17, 2023 meeting. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Ek. I'm noticing the name tags are still messed up from our committee meeting. So, almost threw me off a little bit. Alder Johnson, go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment, motion to-
Make an amendment to move item L after item X. And I know, just a little disclaimer on that, I know some folks are leading at the INS committee about moving that up, but this will basically take care of that simply by moving L to after X.
All right. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scanell. Any discussion on the amendment offered by Alder Johnson? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. That amendment is adopted.
Motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Scanell. Discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved as amended. Report by the mayor. Just a couple things here. Obviously, want to extend my condolences and thoughts to Alder Burnett and his family during this very difficult time. Also, wanted to welcome some guests that we have to our chamber. So, young professionals associated with current are here to learn a few things about city government. I promised we'd have them in and out of here in 15 minutes, so we'll see how that goes. But thanks for stopping down to engage with your city government. We really appreciate that. And as I mentioned to you, I'll share with the rest of the folks gathered. It was a little bit of a collaboration between Alder Johnson, then Executive Director of current Young Professionals, and a few of us who are serving on the Membership Committee. So, I'm not sure how many years back that was at this point, but yeah, I don't know, about a decade or so. But it's great to see that it's still going really strong. So, again, thanks for engaging. Thanks for coming down to City Hall. The only other thing that I wanted to touch on is an item that was approved by our Improvement in Services Committee, the Green Stormwater Infrastructure Plan. You know, really the result of some constructive criticism that was offered by this body when we moved forward with some green stormwater infrastructure projects. You know, I think the criticism was, how does this fit into a larger plan for fighting flooding and improving water quality across the city? And so, you know, the administration and staff heard that loud and clear and came back with a good plan. So, just thankful that INS saw the wisdom in it and hoping that the common council will as well. So, with that, I will move along to announcements. Alder Ek.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to announce that this Friday, November 10, at 6:30 p.m., there's an event called Hope Night Wisco, Green Bay. Bringing hope to Green Bay. It's a free event, live music, and it's at the Rush Expo Center, and you can get more information at hopenightwisco.com.
Very good. Thanks for that, Alder. Others with announcements? Other announcements? Alder Campbell.
Being one of the hunt- being in the hunting industry and Thanksgiving coming around and the gun deer season coming up and the finish of the opening of bow season, I wish everybody a safe and prosperous hunt. May everyone come home safe and think of everybody and getting together with family and tradition and enjoying it and then coming home and celebrating it, thankfully, with their families.
All right. Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to, we don't have any recognitions and awards, appointments, or public hearings. We moved landmarks, so we are on ordinance's second reading for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Ek. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Okay, thank you. You may vote.
And that ordinance is adopted unanimously. On to the report of the Improvement in Services Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Items here to be handled separately? Item two. Any others? And it does look like we've got an individual who would like to speak to N1. Yes, we'll just run down the list here. We've just got two items. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Motion open the floor made by Alder Ek, seconded by Alder Stoyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. And we've got Susan Vandehe, who'd like to speak? And then if you could just state your name and address, and then we allow for three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak on this subject. My name is Sue Vandehe. I live at 1282 Ridge Del Court. Reason I'm here is because I feel very strongly in this initiative. We built on the slope of a hill about seven years ago, and the big issue was, what are we going to do about the erosion? All the soil is going to wash away. How are we going to prevent that and prevent the water from running into our house or our garage? So, somebody came upon the idea of informing me about native plants, and so I looked into it and thought, well, we got nothing to lose. And so, we haven't had no problems with erosion. We put in a rain garden, and we have no problems with rain running anywhere we don't want it at all. So, to me, this is a great example of what the city could do as far as with their situation as well. The other advantages that I've had was it saves on water. I don't water my plants at all. I watered them for the first couple days, and that was it. They're so adaptable to the environment that they don't need any babying like other plants or any other living grass or whatever you want to plant. I don't use any pesticides. I don't use any fertilizer. I have wonderful variety of birds, and I don't have any bird feeders. So, there's a lot of win-wins as far as I'm concerned with this, my situation. And so, and also, it provides beauty, and it saved me money. So, I love it. And so, as far as the city goes, I think environmentally, it's also going to improve the stormwater quality, because if you stop the runoff, you're not going to have that running into our rivers, which we also drink from. So, we don't have to make special arrangements to treat all the sewage that goes in there, all the pollutants from the roads. So, we can control that. We also enhance biodiversity the same way as I did in my own land. Also, socially, we all like beauty. I mean, I think if you look in your packet originally that you were given by the Sustainability Commission, there are before and after pictures of what a city does without the infrastructure, the green. And I think it has a lot more appeal when they add the trees and all the native plants that are going to take care of the water problems. So, it also encourages outdoor activity, because when you see green, you want to be under those trees or play around out there. And it also improves our air quality. The economics of it is that if we're shading the buildings with trees or planting more trees to do that, it's going to, it's going to reduce our energy demand also for cooling. It also lengthens the lifespan of the infrastructure that is there, because it slows down the rate of the runoff, and it also lowers the maintenance costs of the drainage systems that are there. And then, as far as the wonderful thing that we get as a byproduct really is the aesthetics. People enjoy it. They just enjoy being outside, under the trees. It also increases the property values. People like living on those streets where they're all tree-lined. And also, I think this not only means for Green Bay, but it gets out in the whole state. What does Green Bay have that other places don't have? And when you talk about boulevards and different places where people want to go biking and walking and hiking, that's a boost to tourism. And when you boost tourism, you're going to boost investment. And lastly, if we could do it for our kids and our grandkids, because that's going to be something that's going to end up being here for the future as well, instead of complaining about the roads being worn away but, washed away by the bad rains that we've been getting.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Any questions for our guests? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any others who'd like to speak to this item? All right. Motion to close the floor by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the floor is closed. We had a motion to approve. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. On to N2. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Johnson. And this is an item to approve the draft letter and resolution prepared by Department of Public Works seeking WISDOT reconsideration regarding need for sidewalks on Country Club Road.
Alder Burnett had indicated that there may be some folks here wishing to speak on this item, so I'd like to make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties.
Motion to open the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. We have Richard Switzer who'd like to speak. And then name and address, sir, and try to keep it to three minutes.
Sure. Okay. I type this up to make it as brief as possible. My name is Richard Switzer, 2813 Doe Trail, Green Bay, West Side. And I'm here to, first of all, appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my neighbors in requesting that sidewalks be dropped from the Country Club Road project in 2025. I've talked to Steve about this project, and we realized there's some complications with the funding. But Country Club Road is really a rural road. It's not really a city street. It was built in 1930 to go down to Oneida Riding and Country Club, and there was absolutely nothing anywhere around that area till about 1975, '78. So, it really isn't the kind of road that sidewalks would be useful for on either side. It's a rural road. There are large trees. There are plantings. I'm sure there are power poles that are not placed properly that would be in the way of a sidewalk if they tried to put it on one side or the other. I don't believe the neighbors want the sidewalks in any way. And it would be, the sidewalk would be a dead end, because there is no sidewalk on the south end at Mason Street. There is no sidewalk on the north end at the street that's down there, the Indian Hill Drive. So, the sidewalk would actually not have a place to go. It would be a dead end on both ends, and it would, in a sense, it would be a sidewalk that comes and goes nowhere. And that's the reason we don't want the sidewalk. The insulation would be a financial burden on the property owners, obviously, and unfortunately, they would have to shovel snow for the rest of their life on that sidewalk. And I think it would actually diminish the property values because of the obligation to plow the snow. And because of the width of the street, there's going to be a lot of snow pushed onto the sidewalk, which would be difficult to remove. So, I'm simply requesting a city council approval resolution requesting that sidewalks be removed from the Country Club Road project in 2025.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Alder Campbell?
Sir.
Mr. Switzer? No problem. Just have a question for you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Alder.
I'm on the INS committee too, and we've heard of several neighbors. My question to you, I don't know if you spoke there or not. You might have been present. One thing you may have left out that should remind the rest of the council here is that the other side of the side, the street, has a sidewalk and the, by UW, or what is it?
NWTC.
NWTC there, right? And like we discussed in there with the neighbors, and I want your opinion, is my question, is don't you think that that's probably more adequate enough? Because that's all the side, that all the houses and development is down the street that come out to there, and it's well beyond that. And from what we heard, there's not a lot of people, do you think? There's a lot of people that actually walk in the street to get to school?
Yeah, not at all. It's a busy street, because it's a feeder for the NWTC parking lot. And it's really, there's a very small subdivision that's off to the left. So, it's very few people would walk on that road. If they're going to walk, they're going to walk on the NWCT parking lot, not on the public roadway. So, a sidewalk would be very unbeneficial to anybody.
But on that side, you'd be okay with it?
I would, I really think you're going to have an issue on either side because of the power poles and the large trees. I mean, I don't, nobody would complain if it was on the east side, but I don't think that's really a possibility. You know, I think it's either build the sidewalks or no sidewalks, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other folks to speak on this item? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. We have a motion before us, don't we, to approve? Yeah, I think we do. On that, Alder Galvin.
Thank you, your honor. I used to live on Indian Hill Drive, which intersects with Country Club. I was there when Indian Hill went from a two-lane, pretty junky road with ditches to a four-lane cement with curb and gutter. That road and Country Club Road are secondary truck routes, if my understanding is correct, which means trucks are able to travel on that route. My second oldest daughter was almost hit by a truck on that street. No sidewalks. She was walking in the roadway. When I lived there, there were a lot of young people. I had young knees back then. I used to run quite a bit in that area. And there were a lot of people using Country Club and Indian Hill and the surrounding roads to run in, bike in with their children. Kids would be going to the park at Ted Fritsch, taking the frontage road. So, my belief was, at least my understanding when I lived there, was that road was used quite a bit. My concern is that it's a secondary truck route. It's an arterial road for students going to and from NWTC, and that's quite a few vehicles alone coming from there. This route was also designated by the Green Bay Public Schools and approved by this council as a safe route to schools. Several years, not just an overnight thing, but several years was spent studying the safest routes to the schools in that area for children that are biking and walking. And that road was designated as one of those routes. I understand, I have friends that still live in that area, and I understand this is a financial hardship, should this pass. But reading through the resolution, they asked that there be no sidewalks. I would be able to go with something that says one sidewalk on one side of the road, but no sidewalks at all, I think, is just a recipe for a future disaster. So, I can't support this resolution as it's written. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Director Gner, can you weigh in on that a little bit, just given the line of questioning that Alder Campbell had and then the comments that Alder Galvin made, just with respect to whether or not it's possible to put sidewalks in on that east side of Country Club?
Well, I guess we can ask. It would be my answer there. This project is being funded through Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG funding, which comes down through the Federal Highway Administration, funnels through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, and ultimately winds up with a local jurisdiction such as the city of Green Bay. The enabling legislation, federal legislation, which provides for the STBG program, requires what's referred to as complete streets. And complete streets involve motor vehicle transportation, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. And that is a requirement. There's really not a whole lot of option there. They do make special cases for items such as a rural county trunk highway, where you're out beyond where there's density of population. But in, I've been with the city for 16 years. I was in private practice for 17 years prior to that. And with all of the road work that I had done on behalf of the Department of Transportation, I have personally never been involved with a project that has successfully had the sidewalk provision removed from it. However, I did indicate to the Improvement in Service Committee, if it was the desire of this council, I would be more than happy to draft the letter and resolution that's included within the packet tonight. My professional opinion, I don't think that it's going to, I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference. I think the Department of Transportation likely will come back to us and tell us that this is federal legislation. Their hands are tight as well, but we're more than willing to give it a shot to see what we can do.
Okay.
But Alder Galvin is correct. This is listed within the Safe Bike and Walk Plan as an area that, for the future, when reconstructed, should be considered for bicycle and pedestrian accommodation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, one point that Alder Galvin made that I do agree with, and it was my understanding when we referred this back to committee, that we were talking exclusively about the east side of the road in terms of the resolution. And so, I too was surprised to see the resolution say, you know, the request to remove sidewalks from both sides. It's my understanding, and Director Gner, perhaps you could answer this, that NWTC did not have objection to the sidewalks. Is that correct?
That is correct, but the resolution and the letter were the result of the discussion that came from the committee. I followed the direction that the committee gave me.
Yep, understood. Yeah, yeah. And so, and again, I'm just making the note about why I too was surprised to see both sides removed, because I didn't feel like that was discussion at council. I understand committees different. So, I'm going to propose an amendment that we strike item one from this resolution, so that basically it eliminates the consideration of no sidewalks on either the east or west sides of the project, but still retains the request for the, that the sidewalks, sorry, that the sidewalks be limited to the east side. It still retains that request, which is, of course, what the residents here were speaking to. That's, but I think, to Alder Galvin's point, the safe routes to school is a really important consideration for me. And if the sidewalks, even if DOT went along with this, if the sidewalks were at least installed on the NWTC side, who has no objection to this, I feel more comfortable with that than completely eliminating both sides. So, my amendment again is to strike item number one.
It's a motion by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Campbell. Alder Ek?
So, you're, so striking number one, but it also had the other options on there. So, it did say sidewalks are required, that they be limited to the east side of the project only. So, I guess you're just saying you just don't want the first one on there. I get it.
Correct. Any other comments? Alder Morgan?
Chief Gner, is there now, or is there any consideration for bicycle lanes there? Or does that even allow it on a secondary truck route?
That is proposed in the design as it's currently sitting.
So, that would help a little bit. But I agree. I think the idea that Alder Johnson, I agree with that one.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant?
Someone from the public wants to speak, so motion open the floor.
Motion to open the floor made by Alder Grant, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The floor is open. And if you could just state your name and address for us, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Linda Servie. I live at 810 Country Club. I agree, I got the letter in the mail, and I didn't, when we talked about it before, we didn't have anything about not having any sidewalk, but having it on the NWTC side was fine. And I talked to one of the teachers from there. They were over checking some of the lines yesterday, and he told me too. He says, well, why don't they just put it over here? We're the ones that use it. So, they would be perfectly happy to have it.
All right. Thanks so much for those comments. Any questions? Alder Stoyer?
Hi. Thank you. I got a question. I know you live on the west side of the street, and we talked at length about this project. And if the sidewalk were only on the east side of the street or road, would you cross the road to use the sidewalk? I mean, you don't want a sidewalk in front of your house, because it's in the right, it would be within the right of way. But over the years, because there's been no sidewalk, there's trees and landscaping and all sorts of stuff. There might be phone poles. A lot of these things that, in a sense, shouldn't be there, but because over a long, long period of time that are there. So, we understand that. But it could be a fairly busy road, but would you, if you wanted to walk down, walk down the Mason Street, would you cross the street and walk on the sidewalk by NWTC?
Well, I've lived there for 40 years, and I've drive every place I go. And my dog stays in his yard, so I don't have to take him for a walk either.
All right. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Ek, seconded by Alder Scanell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. Floor is closed. So, we have Alder Johnson's amendment to handle. That was offered and seconded. Any additional commentary on that? Alder Stoyer?
Yeah, we had a lengthy discussion at committee on this, and I'm fine with that. You know, I think, like I said, you know, Director Gner kind of mentioned that with a project like this, this is the way it is. And that some people don't like that, but in order of funding and all these other things, that might be the case. I think the fact that he agreed to do the resolution, we're thankful for. Whether or not it goes through, we'll see. But I think if you strike that first item, at least it'll have a chance somewhat. So, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Alder Campbell?
As far as the discussion that we left in committee, I don't ever remember it saying get rid of the sidewalks altogether unless that was just mentioned by Director Gner that it was all or nothing. We were always about asking for the east side- We were always about asking for the east side of the road. I don't know where this got lost in the shuffle here. This is all new to me.
Well, the amendment will take care of it, so.
That's just a comment that I had, because till now, I didn't realize it was struck from completely as a question.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That amendment is adopted. Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion here. Alder Johnson?
Just a quick question for legal. I assume we'll need to pull the resolution, or will that amendment automatically carry through with the approval of the resolution?
I think our practice has always been to pull the resolution and just amend it as was amended.
Noted, thank you. And then, just a quick comment. And I get the sense that the residents in that area fully understand that this body does not have the authority to make the decision, that it is just a request of DOT. But I did want to reiterate that, that, you know, we're doing what we can. And, you know, as part of that, wanting to acknowledge that Aldrew Burnett has done a very admirable job with the best that he can. And I think bringing this resolution forward was really, you know, kind of the hail mary, the option that was available to him. So I want you to know that your Alder has worked very hard to do whatever he can to at least have someone from DOT consider this item.
Thanks, Alder. Any other additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been adopted, or has been approved as amended. To Protection and Policy Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Item is here to be handled separately. Item one. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item one. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. And that item was polled by?
Mayor, just a quick point of order.
Alder Hutchinson. Yes, Alder Johnson, point of order.
Just sometimes I know we operate very quickly. I just want the folks that were here to speak on the item on Country Club Road to know that that item has been approved. So if you want to leave, you can. If you want to stick around, we'd love to welcome you, guests.
Sounds great. Thanks, Alder Johnson. Alder Hutchinson?
Yeah, I've got, I had a question on one and what it actually means, what a vote of aye would mean. The agenda item says to deny an appeal by Michael and Patty Zawicki at one five-zero-nine Creekside Lane and reduce the reinspection fees to $75 per and from $300 per. Does that mean if an aye vote for this would reduce the fees from 75 to 300? Or was that the request?
Attorney Bungard?
I would actually turn this over to Deputy CA, Koshart. She's more familiar.
Sure. So the appeal was, for the total of inspection fees, that was $300. So the denial is meaning that appeal wasn't granted, but the committee voted to reduce it to $75, which was the cost of the first inspection fee instead of for four. So to approve would be to sustain the fee at $75.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Protection and policy granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any names to be handled separately or extensions? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That's been approved. Plan Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. We have a second, seconded by Alder Stewart. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none. All in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Finance Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Report of Finance Committee has been approved. Park Committee? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been adopted. Personnel Committee? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Public Arts Commission? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Items here to handle? Mayor? Yes, Alder Johnson?
I should probably be recording. Substitution on item two, which is the table that item, but that is my employer.
Very good. That will be noted. All in favor approval, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. And that report has been approved. CBNP? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Sustainability? Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Report of the Equal Rights Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Alder Johnson on item one? We'll just go to item one.
Do you want to finish the rest of the report?
You can just go ahead, since we just have two.
Okay. Yeah, this, there was a request. Aldrew Burnett, of course, can't be here tonight, but in our meeting that the mayor and Aldrew Burnett and I have before council meetings, we had a couple of discussion points around this. And it makes a lot of sense to me. I'm going to make a motion that we refer this to Protection and Policy Committee, and also request legal review of the document. There was, I mean, much like we did with the Sustainability Commission's report, just seems appropriate that if there are some modifications that we want to see to this report, that it happens at the committee level, not at council level. I don't think there was any desire to, you know, change major things, but there were a couple of slight modifications that I think were being contemplated. And so protection policy makes the most sense, I think, to do that and secure legal review of the document.
All right. Motion has been made to refer this to Protection Policy by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Eck. Additional discussion on that from Alders? Seeing? Alder Hutchinson?
Yes. Thank you. Is there, can you summarize what the concerns were? Because I know there's people listening who are potentially interested.
Alder Johnson? Go ahead.
Yeah, they were not my concerns, but recognizing that there's not time sensitivity to the passage of this document, to give it a couple of weeks and have those things reviewed, bring it back to this body. And I think it's a better process if it brings more people along to support the final passage. Like I said, my understanding, and it's hard for me to speak for Aldrew Burnett, he's not here.
Right.
Right? But my understanding is that there were some slight modifications and maybe some questions related to some legal terminology around it that he wanted to have reviewed.
Okay.
He didn't indicate in our meeting that he would oppose it. He just wanted to see some tweaks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any additional? Alder Campbell?
Is it number two associated with this, too?
We're going to handle that next.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just going one by one, because there's only two of them.
Right. Just because it was polled.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. All in favor of the referral will signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That's been referred onto item two. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Hutchinson. Discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been held. Informational, we've got a building report for October 2023. Oh, sorry. We're on L, yes. Jumped the gun. So back to L. Landmarks Commission. We've got a couple of items here. Attorney Bungard on item one.
Yeah, so this item is just being introduced as an appeal request from the appellant, Pat Henry, for four-twelve, four-fourteen, four-lee street, to appeal a denial of a certificate of appropriateness. We're just requesting that this be scheduled for a full quasi-judicial hearing at the December 5th Common Council meeting, and to direct the appellant and staff to submit written arguments by end of business day on November 29th.
Okay. Very good. So anything that we need to do on this item?
Just approve, so that it will get set for hearing on the 5th.
Motion to approve by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Onto item two, Attorney Bungard.
Yes, so this was, this is a continuation of our quasi-judicial hearing on this appeal from the last Common Council meeting of October 17th. It's essentially a continuation of the hearing that we had. Just want to confirm for the record that no one has, or none of the Alders have any additional conflicts of interest that have arisen that we need to put on the record. And no one has had any ex parte communications with either of the parties. Okay? Seeing none. So it's up to the discretion of council whether we go into closed session. Yes.
After our last meeting?
Yes.
Apparently Mr. Hercman left. He sent me an email indicating he had injured himself, and that's why he didn't stick around. I responded saying I hope he felt better, and that his attorney would be notified of our decision.
Okay.
He apparently, I think, misunderstood and had his attorney reach out to me, to which I responded again that, no, I didn't have anything to say, and that he had all the information needed from the city.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
Thanks, Alder. Just want to put it all.
So at this point, sorry. Yes. So I just wanted to review the options if council has questions. You can certainly ask additional questions. Otherwise, we have all the written briefs that were submitted by both staff and the appellate, so we can move into closed session to continue deliberations.
Anything for open? Otherwise? Motion to move to closed session made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? Seconded. Seconded by Alder Johnson. Alder Scannell, you got it?
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, subsection one, subsection A, Wisconsin statutes, for purposes of deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before that governmental body. The council will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85, subsection two, Wisconsin statutes, to take action on items discussed in closed session, if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Alder. Any, if there isn't any additional commentary, we'll use the board.
You may vote. Alder Stewart?
All right. And that has been approved unanimously, so we are in closed. Alder Scannell makes a motion to return to regular order of business, so seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. And we are back in regular order. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to grant the appeal from John Hercman regarding the denial of the certificate of appropriateness. Design review for the window removal and replacement located at 1137 South Monroe Avenue, based on findings that the appeal is not precluded, and the work, as completed, did not detrimentally change, destroy, or adversely affect any exterior feature of the improvement or site upon which said work is to be done, and to direct staff to prepare findings of fact and conclusion of law to be presented for adoption at the next meeting of the Common Council.
Thanks, Alder. Seconded by Alder Morgan. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. And that motion has been approved. We're now on to informational items. So we've got a building report for October 2023 included in the packet, just for your review, onto resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules except for? Five. Five.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up all of these resolutions with one roll call vote, with the exception of item five. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Entertaining motion to adopt?
Motion to amend the resolution to match up.
Why don't we take the bulk of them first? We just suspended the rules. So motion to adopt, all the items with the exception of item five. That was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Campbell. Discussion? We will use the board.
Just give me one moment. You may vote.
And those items have been approved unanimously, or adopted unanimously, onto item five.
Motion to amend to strike number one.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to amend the resolution, striking item one, seconded by Alder Galvin. Discussion here? This is on the Country Club. Any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Alder Johnson makes a motion to adopt as amended, was seconded by Alder Stewart. Any discussion here? All right, we'll use the board.
You may vote. Alder Galvin? Oh, so there we go. Okay.
That also is approved unanimously. Yeah. Onto Committee of the Whole, yes. Also have a closed session item potentially here for consideration, possible action on an update regarding PFOS litigation.
I didn't put this in. Does anyone have any questions, or can we just take a vote based on the information received by the committee?
Right.
I have no question.
Right. Does any Alders want to go into closed session to discuss this?
Yep. So then it would just be a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Alder Galvin makes a motion to approve staff recommendation, that was seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. Next item on Committee of the Whole is consideration for possible action on a request by Department of Public Works to declare an emergency for repair of storm sewer along the East River, south of Main Street, in the vicinity of Ellis Street Extended. Director Grenier?
So staff has provided in the committee pack, or council packet, some information relative to a storm sewer in the vicinity of Ellis Street Extended, south of Main Street on the east side. There is a storm sewer that discharges off to the East River there that has collapsed. Staff has done some investigation and provided a recommendation to approve or to repair that storm sewer. But with the rainfall events that we've had over the past couple of weeks, where that pipe is currently blocked has undermined and blown up. There's now a sinkhole, and we have a significant amount of debris that is entering the East River and causing an environmental situation there. So what staff is requesting is a declaration of emergency, which gives us the power under state statute to go ahead and get that repair completed and get it restored back to an environmentally safe condition, and eliminate the safety hazard to the public that exists over there with that sinkhole. And then we can report the actions that have been taken out at the next regularly scheduled INS committee meeting after completion of those activities. Because department heads only have the authorization to spend up to $25,000, we can't get the work done for $25,000, so we need that emergency declaration and authorization to exceed that spending threshold. All work that would be completed on this particular project, excuse me, would come from the Storm Sewer Emergency Fund.
Great. Thanks, Director Grenier. Any questions on that? Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve. Seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Last item on the Committee of the Whole agenda, for consideration of possible action on the over hire of the community liaison role in the mayor's office, cost of $2,878. This is a sad story, because we're losing Melissa Edison, who is our community liaison, going down with her eventual spouse to Madison. So unfortunately, she's going to be leaving us, and what we would like to do is have an over hire in this position so that Melissa would be able to train up for a couple of weeks, her replacement. Would have sent this through the, the normal committee process and council process, but we're not going to have that second meeting in November. So it won't, it won't be in time to meet this, so that's why we're bringing it forward to Committee of the Whole. But happy to answer any questions. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I obviously support this, and I just kind of wanted to communicate again in the meeting that we had between Mayor Aldrew Burnett and myself. Aldrew Burnett as well indicated in that meeting that he wholeheartedly supported this. Makes a lot of sense to transfer that expertise, so.
Thanks, Alder.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Stevens. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. Ordinance is first reading. We've got the third one that we need to... Well, I'll kick it over to either Clerk Jeffries or Attorney Bungard to describe, just before we take some votes there.
I can take it.
Attorney Bungard?
Yes, so this ordinance is essentially just codifying the changes that were done by resolution when we had the redistricting last year. It's a requirement under state statute that you have an ordinance that lays out the wards and the alder manic districts within those wards. And because nomination papers are coming out in December, we wanted to make sure that this was on the books before any activities with our next election cycle take place. So the recommendation is to adopt for first and, at first and final reading.
Great. Thanks, Attorney Bungard. Question from Alder Weary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it, either for the clerk or attorney. More for public knowledge, right? Mine has normally four or five wards, and with the breakdowns, there's 31, 31A, 32A, 32B, 32C. Can you just explain why? And, and can we?
Yeah.
Work that those, each ward is still going to vote all together in the same place, the less confusion, because there's going to be confusion. Thanks.
Clerk Jeffries?
Yes, thank you. So, those split wards were a result of redistricting, a process that had happened at the state level that took place after the city and the county had done theirs. And so, again, as Attorney Bungard had said, we're making sure that everyone knows that those wards that were split off from the original wards are included with the alder manic districts. Excuse me. And indeed, we have two valiant poll workers who work 31, 31A, 32A and B at Calvary Lutheran, and they, it, it is a lot of work, because it's five different reports, unfortunately. But it is really the same number of voters for those Ward 31, Ward 32, 39 has one. The only one that doesn't have any humans is 14A, that's actually in the middle of the Fox River, oddly. So, we have set our polling locations and our polls, and our poll workers to work the wards that are connected with them, like 8 and 8A, 10A, 11A. So, they are all together, and those, as the county creates those ballots, the split wards have the same ballots, especially for the local elections, as the parent ward, if you will.
I appreciate, yeah, state's always messing up our stuff, huh? But will we be sending out the notices again of where you vote? To be, we've sent them passed in postcards.
Right, so with their, I only, I anticipate only two changes for 2024, and those notices will go out in early January. That would be Ward 41 moving to Living Hope instead of the Botanical Garden, and then need to find a new place for Seventh Day Adventist, which I think is 2940, although, don't quote me on that. So we'll send those out in early January for only the places where there are changes. I don't anticipate changes anywhere else.
Thank you. Thanks, Alder. Any other questions? All right, given that, I'll entertain a, a motion to suspend the rules on one and two.
To suspend the rules on one and two.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up items one and two with one roll call vote, made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Motion to advance, items one and two, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stewart. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and those two ordinances have been advanced to a second and final reading. Onto item three. Suspend the rules and approve with a first and final.
Oh, that's what we're doing.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, I think, I think Attorney Bungard had mentioned that, but she mentioned a lot of other things, too.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules and pass this with one roll call.
All right. Attorney, or attorney? Not quite. Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and adopt this, this ordinance on a first and final reading. Seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Now we can. Rules are suspended, so now, motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stewart, and now we will use the board.
Second. You may vote. Okay, sorry. Oh, we've got, thank you, and Alder Galvin? How would you like to be recorded?
How would you like to be recorded? Yeah.
Okay. All right. And you may disconnect.
And that is approved unanimously. Petitions and communications? Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.